Okay, the board was in executive session. I would like to ask for a motion to return to regular session. Okay, first by Tim, second by Amanda. The board is now returning to regular session. It is 7:02 on the April 18th, Tuesday. We will jump right into the agenda. The first item up is the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right here. Mr. Campbell, will you lead us in the flag?
...............................................................
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. All right, we have five board members here tonight. Carrie and Dan are excused, so we will jump right in. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I'm going to group C and D together. These are the minutes from March 16th and the ABF meeting, minutes from March 20th. Can I get a motion on approving both of those sets of minutes? First by Amanda, second by Mr. Campbell. All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, that passes. First item up on the agenda is the superintendent's report, so I'm going to pass that. Oh, sorry, sorry, timeout on this team. One thing on here before we jump to Eric. This is a special board meeting tonight. We normally do not take public comment, which is why it's not on our agenda, but given, I am pretty sure all of these people are not here because they just want to hang out in the State Street Library and hear about the school budget. I am going to request from the board, consider that we open the floor for public comment this evening, as you are all in favor with that. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to read a statement about public comment. You have to follow these rules if you'd like to speak, and then when we open it up, you can walk up to that podium, and then you can start the timer, and you'll have three to five minutes to say your speech. So, "Board encourages public expression. At board meetings, speakers may comment on matters related to any agenda item. The board will not permit in public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Personal attacks, obscene language, life statements, sets of violent statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Total time allocated for public comment is 30 minutes with an option to extend by vote of the board. There is a three to five minute allotment per speaker. We offer comment at the period beginning of our regular meetings and a second period at the end, but generally, we do not receive comments at special meetings." We're going to make that exception tonight. "We ask speakers to identify themselves by their name and address prior to speaking." Most of you look like new faces, so I won't add on this. Please be advised, public comment is public comment. It is your opportunity to make a comment to the board. This is not an exchange with the board. It is not a back and forth. We are not being rude. We just sit here and we nod and we say thank you at the end. It happens all the way for every single one of our board meetings every month, so don't take it as a personal slight if you start badgering us with questions and we just sit here and go, "Mm-hmm, thank you, thank you." That is how public comment works. These are meetings for the Board of Education that are open to the public to observe, and as part of that, you may comment at the beginning of the meeting. It's the same way that town meetings and village board meetings, et cetera, work. So, that being said, if anyone would like to offer public comment tonight, the podium is all yours. Don't forget your name and your address. Before I start, does everybody have the email I sent you to dispatch you, or would you like to?
I did not open the link. Sorry. Channel down. Who makes emails?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I forgot.
But don't forget your name and your address, just because it goes on the record.
Okay, so before I start, I'm Kelly Haining. I live at 43 West Elizabeth Street, Princeton Heights. So hello, I am here speaking as a representative for a group of concerned parents. We would like to discuss the lack of school safety officers, sometimes called SROs, for any form of armed security in the district. I will call all armed personnel providing school security by the general term "school safety officer" in this statement to alleviate confusion. It has come to our attention that the district has two part-time school safety officers that alternate days. Thus, one school safety officer is responsible for all three buildings during the school day. This is not enough in today's world. There should be a full-time school safety officer in every building. We contacted 18 other school districts of varying sizes and socioeconomic levels in the area, and only two just had one safety officer for the entire district. We are in the minority when it comes to school security. We asked those districts, "Do you have a full-time school safety officer in every middle school and high school building the entire school day?" Of those 18 districts, 14 stated they did. We are the minority when it comes to school security. We asked those districts, "Do you have a full-time school safety officer in every elementary school during the entire day?" Of those 18 districts, 14 stated they did. We are in the minority when it comes to school security. Next, we looked at our data for districts where school buildings were on the same campus or the same distance apart as our campus buildings. According to Google Maps, the time to drive from Waterman Primary School to State Street Elementary School is four minutes. These two buildings are the furthest apart in our district. Of the 18 districts, seven had all of their buildings within four minutes or less. Of those seven districts, five stated they had full-time armed security in all buildings for the entirety of the day. We again say, we are not in the minority when it comes to school security. Lastly, we understand that these numbers could have discrepancies, and indeed, we seem to have one with what a board member experiences at their job and what the district told us. We acknowledge that one or two districts could be stating things that are slightly off for school protection, but 14 out of 18 districts are not doing that. These are four instances where we are not keeping up with what other districts deem to be necessary when it comes to school security. Our students, children, families, and teachers deserve better. Like Scanny Atlas School District, the Liverpool School District also employs school safety officers who are retired police. Their head of security told us they pay these officers at a rate of $38 an hour. If you do the math, eight hours a day, 185 school days, at $38 an hour, you're looking at approximately $56,000 a year per school safety officer. Let me say that again, that's approximately $56,000 per year per safety officer. And retired police officers get their benefits from their pensions, so districts do not need to worry about added expenses. To have two additional full-time school safety officers, making the district have one full-time school safety officer in each building would cost approximately $112,000. We strongly encourage the board to put two full-time school safety officers on this year's budget. Every Scanny Atlas student deserves equal protection in their school building and the same amount of protection as the students in their neighboring districts. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Justine Quinlan. I live at 418 Highland Avenue, Scanny Atlas. My oldest son goes to Waterman, and I have two younger children who will be attending in the upcoming years. As a parent, I am deeply troubled by the increasing incidents of violence that are taking place in our schools. We send our children to school each day with the expectation that they will be safe and secure. Unfortunately, that is not always the case. We have seen far too many tragic school shootings. These senseless acts of violence have left families devastated and communities shaken. We must take action to ensure the safety of our children. That is why I am here today to advocate for increased armed security in our schools. More is better in this case. Having armed security in schools can help deter potential attackers, but sends a message that our schools are not soft targets and we take safety of our students very seriously. It is a true deterrent and the only thing that will actually protect our children in case of an emergency. I understand that some people may have concerns about the cost of hiring armed guards, but I believe that the safety of our children is worth any expense. We cannot put a price tag on the lives of our families. I strongly believe we need at least one armed SRO in each building at all times. We need to take action now to prevent future tragedies and ensure the safety of our children. It's better to be safe than sorry in a situation like this.
Anyone else? Thank you, ladies. It's very intimidating to get up there, so good for you for doing it, because everybody usually afterwards says, "Oh, my God, I did it." All right, if that is it, we will continue on with the agenda. So, up next will be superintendent's report. Eric, I will kick it over to you.
Thank you, Danielle. I will talk in a moment all about SROs and Odyssey of the Line and a bunch of other fun things, but I did want to address first our Director of Learning, which is Scanny Atlas Code for Special Education Services, is Jennifer Whipple, and she's here to join us. At our last board meeting, we talked a little bit about the increased phenomenon of test requests for student identification that we're experiencing, and the board had requested a brief update for Jen, so Jen, the floor is yours.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
Or can you do it from here? Because it's intimidating, just on the camera. All right, so I put together a little bit of information, and then I guess I would just hopefully be able to answer any questions that you've had, or continue to have. I believe John Lawrence was here talking primarily about the 3-4-5 building, so just a bit of information. I would say that it's not atypical to get the bulk of new referrals at that grade band. I used to be a school psychologist ages ago, even before the RTI regulation, and even when I was a school psychologist, I worked in a K5 building, which then became a K6 building, and I remember even then saying, usually about the winter of third grade, we'd start to see students struggle, and it became more noticeable, so that's when I started to get a more of an increase in that request for intervention or referrals. So I don't think the idea of the bulk of our new referrals taking place in grades 3-4-5 is anything different than I've ever experienced. Obviously, our structure here is a bit different, just because of the way the buildings are physically separate, so sometimes it looks like things are happening in one building more than another, but it's really more developmental or grade-band related, I would think. So I just pulled some numbers, again, kind of rough numbers, because I just sort of looked on my software and counted up, but over the last five years, which is basically the time that I've been here, we've had about 49 total initial referrals to the Committee on Special Education. 16 of them were at Waterman, which is our K2 building. 22 were at State Street, and 11 at the middle school. I only did K8 because we have very, very few initial referrals at 912 level. And I can break it down by grade levels. Within the State Street grade band, which is where the highest number of initial referrals were, nine of them were in third grade, six were in fourth grade, and seven were in fifth grade. So that just gives you a five-year kind of overview of, again, not all that atypical, that the majority of our referrals are coming out of those grade levels. One thing that we always look at is, or I always look at, is 100% of our referrals that are made by the school level are typically students that qualify, just because we follow a really, really good RTI process. We have all that information in place, and, you know, when you're really looking at an RTI model, again, we shouldn't have a lot of new referrals prior to those grade levels. Students in K1, 2 are just K, it's just being exposed to the curriculum for the first time. Grade 1, you might start to see some students that may need some Tier 2 interventions, maybe starting Tier 3, and really, intensive Tier 3 interventions probably aren't starting until around second grade for a typical developing student. So it makes sense that after you go through all three tiers of intervention, and you're looking at a CAC referral, that probably isn't going to really start to happen until the end of second grade, beginning of third grade. Again, just to give you an idea, a solid RTI plan, you know, a Tier 2 intervention should be implemented for between 9 and 30 weeks, and a solid Tier 3 intervention should then be implemented for a solid 15 to 20 weeks, so essentially, a whole school year of interventions before you're saying students aren't responding to that level of intervention or to instruction. I mean, a couple just friends, I guess I would say. Obviously, in third grade, state tests begin, so there's some stress around state tests, you know, students aren't going to do well, maybe they need some assessment. Or in fourth and fifth grade, state test results have come back in a typical year, and then if students aren't doing well, then that concern arises as to why is my student or my child not performing well, and then referrals come up. I think, I mean, that's just some numbers. I guess I don't know how much information you guys are looking for, if you just want to start and ask questions, or, you know, continue on with the questions that you had for Jen.
I think a little bit of it was trying to understand the phenomenon and why that exists, specifically at State Street, so thanks for starting there. It is typical that you start to see this more acutely, and the level of rigor, especially from grades 2 to 3 with reading, explodes, so you do see more. I think the other part of it had to do with communication and how parents are coming into the process and preconceived ideas about what the process looks like, and we're just looking for ways for parents to use us as the first best source of information. Amanda, you had some questions last time that had to do with, I won't speak in that term, but it was about that, why?
I mean, definitely a big piece, that's been a phenomenon for a long time, you know, it switched from learning to read to reading, right? But when we look at what's going on and what John was sharing with us at this moment, you know, diving a little bit deeper into, do we feel like it's kind of COVID-related, and a lot of kids are behind and starting to feel that? What number of parent requests for evaluation do go through to a 504 and IEP? And making sure that the district is, you know, catching those for parents and making sure that, you know, those particular pockets of kids, you know, what is going on? Where could we have potentially missed it? Where could we have potentially caught it earlier?
Well, I would say, any referral to CSE that a parent makes goes through CSE, because the parent has a right to make that referral at any time. Some of the numbers, again, rough numbers, again, during that five-year period, there were 17 parent referrals at the State Street Building at the grades 3, 4, 5 level, and 30% of those students that were evaluated were found eligible by the CSE. Oftentimes, it's because of the RTI process that we say right now, we can't find this child eligible for services because we can't rule out lack of response to intervention, because our RTI teams are seeing that response, seeing those trends, seeing those trend lines go up. When we make referrals from our ESBS, from our school-based intervention team, over the last five years across all three buildings, 100% of those referrals are found eligible because they have the data, and, you know, that's... We had 10 parent referrals at the middle level, 6, 7, 8, and 10% of those were found eligible by the CSE. And then a higher percentage at Waterman were found eligible, nine parent referrals, and about 78% of those were found eligible. But sometimes those are speech, so those are a little different. You know, the biggest difference sometimes between an outside evaluation and a school-based evaluation, when you're looking at a clinical setting or a clinical evaluation, typically they're looking more at criteria that falls under the DSM, the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, and you may have to fit a certain criteria. And sometimes students do, and sometimes adults do, but then, for me, as a school person, I also have to be able to tie that into, how is that impacting academic performance? We have students that have a mental health diagnosis or a medical diagnosis, and there's no impact on academic performance, so in New York State, we really aren't supposed to be finding those students eligible as students with educational disabilities, because the impact on the educational performance has to be gotten. Sometimes that's hard to understand, it's very technical. You know, you get a diagnosis or an evaluation from an outside source that says, "Your child has this diagnosis," and so you automatically think, "Well, they need help." We have data oftentimes to say, "We're giving them the supports that they need, and they are succeeding," and just because that diagnosis exists doesn't automatically mean they qualify for special education. So, they're a little different.
So Jen, just a question, because my... ... Maybe there is a separate evening session, just learn about...
I'll tell you exactly where it is.
............
So it's jumping chip, but we had our first committee meeting tonight for curriculum committee, and we discussed having that be one of the evenings, explaining that process.
Because this goes back to a problem, not a problem, an opportunity that many members of the community have on a variety of subjects, whether it's buses, or special education, or whatever, go to the source for the information. So in this case, that explanation that we will give you services without a 504 in place, or here are the 50,000 acronyms that I use every day, and here's my list, whatever it is, it would be awesome if we can kind of help our families and take some of that scarierness out of it, like, "Oh, all right, this lady's pretty normal, and she's going to let me know if I need to be worried, so maybe I don't need to worry as much, or maybe I do." So, just kind of throw that out there, that maybe we could incorporate that, and I'll let you talk about that when you get to it.
The 504 process too needs to be conceptually separated from the special education process. That's something that we did this year, whereas Kristin Moses, in her role, handles 504s, which are combinations. And so many of those things, you don't need a 504 for. It's just good teaching. Didn't finish the test, have some extra time. You need preferential seating, sit there, you know? You don't need a 504 to do those things, it's just connections and caring enough about kids to do what they want.
Right, we just had a meeting about that today and talked about that same thing, and I said I would rather improve our communication practices as a systems function between grade levels, between buildings, than feel like we have to put all that information on a formalized plan, because you can provide any accommodation you want for a student on any test that you're giving, if it's teacher-developed.
Make it part of your daily practice and culture.
Yeah.
I think the pushback, though, sometimes, for the parents is, you might have one teacher who's great about all of that, and then the next year, you might have a teacher who's not on their A-game for all of that. And so the feeling for parents is, if I get this document, all the teachers will bring their A-game for my kid every day.
And our mission is to make it so that you don't need that document, that everybody consistently knows, if a kid needs more time, give him more time.
But we're not there yet.
You're not there.
It's a mission, but we're not there. One final question.
Can I ask one question, what levels 504s, what grade?
All the way through.
Which ones are heavier right now?
Right now, it seems the high school seems to be the most, and a lot of it...
For assessments, all ACTs, SATs, and all that.
A lot of times it comes up for ACTs, AP exams.
And it helps, and sometimes there's a lot of anxiety, especially in a high-performance district with high expectations, and kids that are kind of, I think it turns victims to that toxic perfectionism that comes from affluent communities. We see a lot of anxiety, we see a lot of 504s that are the result of anxiety, and if that's what helps that child, great, you know, we're happy to accommodate, but again, they can just have those combinations, those modifications, any other day. It's just an ACT, an SAT, a Regents exam, that's the only time that you need that document to get that. And if that's what they need to perform in those things, then so be it, we'll do it.
So one final piece I just like to say is, do you guys, does your department or the buildings have any sort of process review for when a parent does make a request? So this school is essentially, we missed it, to look at, why do we think we missed it? Is it because that child's only gone with us for one year and they're brand new to the district? Or is there, you know, looking at patterns of, does it seem to be that we're missing, you know, a disability in the area of math, because we don't have the interventions? I mean, it's very hard to find an intervention in math that's research-based. So do you guys have, do you guys sit down and have like a process review for that?
When you say, "We missed it," are you, what do you...
If a parent requests an evaluation, so it doesn't come through the school, it comes through a parent, and if it does get approved, it does go all the way through to an IEP of 504, not approved to get the testing done, but all the way through, and the child is found to have a greater need. Is there a process review for where... Is there a process review for where along the lines did the school not catch the problem?
Typically, I would say if a parent makes the referral, we usually, I can't even think of one where we were completely surprised, because we usually say, yep, that makes sense. We may not, as an ESBIT, as a building-level team, been ready to say, we need to make this referral now, but we are close, and we are along that same path. So I honestly can't think of a situation, in the time I've been here, where a referral was made, and people, teachers, teams of teachers weren't aware of that concern, and all of a sudden, we were like, oh, we missed that, but-
So it was more just timeline?
Yeah, so it's more, and again, back to what Eric said, students are getting the interventions that they need, through the whole process. Like, we're not waiting to give students anything until they qualify for something, like, they're getting what they need. So we, as a school team, feel very confident that they are getting the services that they need, and again, back to Eric's point, oftentimes, the intervention doesn't really change a lot, when we do get to the point, because we've gone through all tier three, all tiers of intervention, and they're getting the intervention that they need based on the data that's in front of us, and so there's really no reason to change that, simply because a student has an IEP, you know, because it's working, and we have data, it just kind of adds to the program. But in terms of process, we internally talk in depth about every referral. And, you know, again, speaking, I used to be a school psychologist, so I used to do that work, and what am I seeing here? And I'll go to the speech therapist, what are you seeing here? And how do those assessments line up, and what might that be telling us, and what other things should we be looking at? And is there another area that we should assess to rule in or rule out, what we might be thinking is going on, and what is the reason? So that that happens constantly, on an individual basis, around that particular student's evaluation. I can't think of a time that we, that I felt like we missed something, where I had to go back and say to the team, wait a minute, how did this happen? Because we, the ones that are surprises to the building-level team are typically the ones that don't qualify for services, the ones that come up, and it's sometimes just a timing. Parents like that, I want it done now, and you say, yep, yeah, okay, that's fair, because we're moving in that direction anyway. We think, you know, the student's making progress, and we think we have more time we can give, but we can do it now, and typically, it aligns, at least in the five years that I've been here, that's really the case.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
So sort of, if you see in mind, 30% is what you mentioned earlier for the State Street group, I think. If on 30% of the referrals are key from external sources, translated into actual designations, right? Is that, would you say that that's typical? Is there such a thing as a standard, expected outside of the normal distribution, or anything like that?
I don't know what's typical in terms of, like, referrals that aren't made by an ESBIT team, I guess I don't have the answer to that, in terms of what is a typical, I mean, 30% of students being found eligible to me is kind of low, because again, typically, if we're getting to that point, we should have things in place, and we should kind of have an idea of what the students' needs are by the interventions we're providing.
Right.
But I guess I can't answer, I don't know if that's a typical number, for other places, you mean, like, other districts, other areas?
Well, in the space, I guess, so if next year, for example, in the last three years, you had 30% one-year, but previously was 10%. So the time on this question, if you realize, wait a minute, this is by discrepancy, we have to refine our, not that we're missing something, but we have to internally revise if we do our assessments, if you now have such a shift.
I would say it's more about the regulations that we're required to follow, because again, if we're looking at a suspected learning disability in the area of reading for a student in grades K through four, we have to be able to document the lack of response to intervention to be able to qualify that student as learning disabled. So again, back in the dark ages, when I was training as a school psychologist, we used just a discrepancy formula, we looked at ability level, and achievement level, and if there was a big gap between the two, we said, yep, there's a processing deficit, and this child has a learning disability. Somewhere around 2008, 2012, when New York State implemented the RTI regulations, not, you can't use that anymore, you can't just say, oh, there's a big difference, there's a disability, you have to say, okay, are we providing appropriate instruction, yes or no? And then once we start to provide that appropriate instruction, we have to give it enough time, because we don't want to say somebody has a disability, if it's more because they haven't received that targeted instruction based on their needs. So oftentimes, the reason that those parent referrals or outside-source referrals are found ineligible, is because we have not had them in that RTI process, and typically, that's because the data that we have at school doesn't indicate that they need to be at a tier-three intervention, they're performing quite well in tier one or tier two. You know, again, going back to, we have so much data, we're looking at classroom performance, unit tests at the end of math in ELA, units, AIMS web data, and when we have kids that are performing in the average range on their AIMS web data, that drives the intervention that they need, which wouldn't be a tier-three significant intervention, because they're performing at grade level, and meeting grade-level standards.
Right, so there could be a disconnect between the humility of the parent's request relative to the systematic approach that is being implemented.
Yes, I would say.
And also, parents love their kids, maybe the emotions and sense of urgency or impulse that-
But two highlights, I love that you said, you know, a diagnosis of a disability doesn't automatically mean an IEP, right? Like, they, if they're performing and doing well, and excelling in school, then they have everything that they need. And just when you have concerns, go to the teacher, go to the school psychologist, go to the school principal, go to you, before you go to an outside evaluation.
Right, yeah, definitely. I mean, and I would definitely say, like, I don't know-
It also would save you significant money as a parent, because it's not costing you any money to call the school and speak to Jen or her team and get some advice before you-
Jen, I see these-
Hey, consultants-
And yeah, we have so much data, that like, again, as a director and as a former school psychologist, I really, really push not over-testing students, because it's stressful for the students. Like, with some of these standardized, with all of these standardized tests, you have to ceiling out, which means you have to fail, or not get correct, four to six items on a subtest, before I can discontinue that test. And they're hard, and like, kids who are really capable, and like, they go forever. And I'm asking them to do things that are above and beyond their grade-level expectations when I'm giving a standardized test like that, so it can be stressful for students, because they feel like they're supposed to know stuff. You know, like, no, it's not, you know, it's okay that you don't know. So I try to encourage not over-testing, because it pulls kids out of classrooms, it, you know, creates, in my opinion, undue stress that doesn't need to happen, because we have curriculum-based data that tells us how students are doing in these areas already. We have reading data, we have math data, we have writing data, we even have social-emotional data, that we have all this information, that I don't necessarily need an additional standardized test to be able to say, this child is performing at grade level and is being successful. So it's not necessary for me to then pull that child out of class, to give an additional test, to supplement what we already know. And when you go for an outside evaluation, it can be hours of all this testing, but again, when we work together as a team, as a school, we have a lot of that information already, so it just alleviates the need to do that.
We have wonderful, talented, empathetic, caring, amazing people in our special ed department. And again, using us as that first, best source of information, in some cases, would save families many thousands of dollars too. Jen and I will sit sometimes in these meetings, and the outside evaluator is bringing reports and data and information, none of which is unknown to us, has not revealed necessarily anything else of value, and are charging these families a lot of money. So there will always be circumstances where a family will pursue that, and that's fine, but please start with us, because maybe we can help avoid the whole thing.
Any other questions for Jen?
Jen, thanks.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, thanks.
Okay, you know what, I'll skip around a little bit, because I want to give Jen another little plug, because she's here right now. On March 30th, we were very fortunate to host the Uta Anadagabosi's New York State Council of School Superintendents Women's Initiative, and that was a-
No, because Rill's left the term.
Yeah, just closed. So Women's Initiative, it was a, over 100 amazing, talented female educational leaders from throughout the state that met at the Skinny Atlas Lodge, and our own team of amazing female educational leaders, right within Skinny Atlas, actually presented two different sessions. So there was one, which was Living and Leading in Your Own Community, that was run by our own Heather Muff and Jennifer Whipple, so thank you, Jen. And then the other one was Empowering Your Inner Voice, led by Francine Grinnell and Kristin Moses. So to have four of our female leaders representing our district, and teaching and coaching amazing women from throughout the state, was pretty remarkable, so.
Thank you.
On that, on that same note, yes, Jen, please, go enjoy yourselves.
Thank you, thank you.
Tell the girls I said hello.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the same note, our work in social-emotional learning, mental health, and suicide prevention that we have been doing throughout the state continued yesterday. Jim McDougall, who is the professor of School Psychology and the inventor of the Biomass Two, from SUNY Oswego, Kristin Moses and I presented yesterday at that Helio Health Conference in Syracuse, to a room full of mental health practitioners, these are the clinicians that actually work within the school districts and within the community. And the presentation that we've done multiple times now, including at the national conference through AASA, is what's the value of one saved life, school saving students from suicide and depression with universal screening and MTSS? So basically, the description of our training was as follows. Following the COVID-19 pandemic, mental health, the pandemic wreaked havoc on students' mental health, with emergency rooms across the country, nearly a 31% increase in mental health-related visits among adolescents. National surveys of high school students indicate that 36% felt persistent feelings of hopelessness, 18% had seriously considered suicide, 16% had developed a plan, and almost 9% of students surveyed made one or more suicide attempts within the last 12 months, pretty horrifying data. This presentation focuses on MTSS procedures in schools, which we have found to dramatically improve the early identification, the provision of support services to this needy population of students. Data from Project Schools will illustrate the outcomes of students identified with depression and suicidal ideation, and the actual numbers of lives saved. So that was our data, that we presented to this conference. And again, it's not to tout us as a model of perfection in this work, it is the fact that, in all of public education, this is the first proactive mental health work that I have been part of in my entire career. So this is the only thing that's happening in schools right now, that allows us to screen and program for struggling kids. Obviously, the most severe level of that concern is suicidal ideation, but then also, and it came up as curriculum committee tonight, that allows us to program targeted interventions for school populations that reveal things through those surveys. So if the survey results at State Street Elementary School reveal that students have struggled with self-awareness, we can find, locate, and target a program to address those skills and kids. So instead of just guessing, and throwing a dart at the board, like I think many of us have done for a long, long time, it's a little bit more of a need-driven approach. And it's actually a nice segue into some of our SRO concerns and conversations that we've had.
Can I pause before you go there?
Yeah.
So given all of that, which we're presenting, do you, in the mere talk to Kristin and all the building principals, do you feel like we are covered for proactively meeting the mental health needs of kids in our district? Are we set up for success with the staffing that we have, and our ability to carry out all of the groups and initiatives and MTSS to meet the needs of the kids?
So the short answer is yes, the long answer is, it's complicated. And the reason is, because so many of the services that are deployed throughout the district are funded through some of the post-COVID initiatives through Anadagak County. So the Helio Health Clinical Support that we have onsite in schools, and we have data about how many Skinny Atlas families are using that, it's amazing, it is widely used. The scary proposition is, if all of a sudden, the county cuts funding to those things, and the full burden of that cost is put on the district, we'd have some decisions to make then. Access, which provides struggling families with assistance in navigating the absolutely confusing world of mental health services and county services available to families, and then some of the other social-emotional learning-type providers that we contract with, like Peaceful Schools and things like that. Right now, yes, but I don't see these needs decreasing, so I think in the future, and especially when you talk about school safety, and the history of what the school has done, much of the research into the most effective ways to keep kids safe have to do with a laser focus on relationships between adults and kids, mental health supports available to kids and families, all of these things that we've put into place, from our SEL coordination to counselors, the school psychologists. The other phenomenon, and that's connected to Jen quite a bit here, is that within school psychology, there is psychometric testing, which is performed to identify whether or not kids have intellectual difficulties, disabilities, and then there's counseling. Some school psychologists are really gifted psychometricians, some are really gifted counselors. We're very fortunate that we have multiple school psychologists here that are very, very good at both, but would I like to see more of their day spent counseling than testing? Absolutely. So that's one of the things, too, with working with the school district, that if we're not burying our school psychologists in the psychometric testing, that is part of their job, then more of that time is available to them to do the consulting. And that's a little bit of a moving target, depending on student needs, depending on the building, depending on where those people are located.
So to that, since we're just talking on this before we get to SROs, if you'd liked them to spend less time on testing and more time on counseling, what, and you might not have the answer today, but as things evolve, or positions change, or retirements happen, or people shift positions, how do we do that? Because saying we want you to test less, oh, but that's a key component of your job, that doesn't change anything. So how do we restructure, at least, maybe not today, but as we go forward, that either those rules are separated, or that there is a conscious effort to make sure there's more time spent on counseling? Because if you have a certain percentage of students that need testing, you have to do it. So saying that we want you to counsel more and test less is lovely, and I fully agree with that, but they still have to get that job done, because that is not only their job requirement, but we have obligations as a district-
Yeah.
-and state requirements and laws that we must follow. So how do we reconcile that?
I think part of it is using us as the first, best source of information, so that some of that unnecessary testing that Jen spoke to, that is stressful and hard to put kids through, maybe we're able to mitigate that or avoid it, or help families to understand that the interventions that they seek are already available to them, so that's part of it. The testing cycle really changes throughout the year, the needs with IEPs and reevaluation season, so that's another thing, model-wise, you know, our school sites. Alyssa, who works at State Street in Waterman, is the only traveler, so we have a middle school school site, and we have a high school school site. So as far as, you know, bandwidth or what we have available, there's far more of a counseling need at the upper levels, and far more of a testing need at State Street. So I think there's probably opportunities for us to make sure we're using our resources as efficiently as possible before necessarily adding, but that may be something that we talked about, it's a conversation that we've already started, but, you know, immediately, no, but in the future, quite possibly.
And so when you talk about, you know, preventative measures, Waterman, Positivity Project, Responsive Classroom, State Street Positivity Project, we get into middle school, we have Peaceful Schools, throughout we have Helio Health and Access, talk about the high school for a minute.
The high school-
Beyond relationships, we know that relationships are the number one, tier one, you know, teachers have to be able to say, hey, how'd your game go last night, did you make the next spell with Pirani? But beyond that, can you talk about the high school for a minute?
We've looked at more-
Let's zoom it up.
One of the things, and we just talked about this in the curriculum committee also, was consistency. You know, the Positivity Project is a program that I'm a huge fan of, it's not really labor-intensive for teachers, it has been creeping from State Street up, but that's something that I think we need to put more work into, specifically the high school, a program, a systematic, daily program of instruction.
Do you think that's the best program for the high school? How to use it, it seems like that- It seems like that any child ages fifteen to eighteen would laugh on your face if you presented that positivity.
I think if they knew that guy's backstory, they might reconsider that.
Maybe.
Such an impressive.
Mr. Carratio, definitely, and I don't want to speak for him because he's not here tonight, and I could have him come and speak to that, but I know there's been, you know, guest speakers and, you know, programs where they've exposed the kids to these sorts of things. And I know he's looking for something a little bit more systematic. I don't know that that's the best program that there is, but we're looking, so we want to put something in place.
So is it realistic that by September, there might be some, a pilot program, something in place more than the one in Dallas?
Well, I will, I will jump in though on that and say, so last year, the students, because my daughter's part of it, brought Morgan's message, petitioned, you know, solicited support from the athletic department to bring in Morgan's message, which they still do and they meet, they had to do, in order to do it, they had to do independent work on their own to become an ambassador. So there's a group of students that are ambassadors from Morgan's message. They meet every few weeks after school, they've got an advisor. It's a hundred percent student-driven and really the, I think it's Stacy and someone else are the advisors. They are simply advisors and observers and they kind of help manage it, but it's, so I, just as someone with kids up there, I think that having the students be involved in that process too is, you know, and whether it's Morgan's message or another program or something.
But I think what I'm there.
A group of adults saying, here's a program that would be so great for you guys to get involved in, and it will really create a great supportive.
And there's a number of other.
But I think what I mean, a pocket of really driven kids and a tier one, everybody gets it.
Right, but this is, this is a program that is to reach out to the peer. So just as an example, it's something that the kids said, this is something that we will buy in and discuss with our friends and discuss with everyone else that we are with, and we will, we will be soldiers on the ground and spread the message.
Possibly.
And so something along those lines, whatever that is, and that is not by wheelhouse or role to figure out what that is, but just as an example.
Yeah.
Things like that at that level.
Yeah.
That we can get the students to buy in and participate in.
They tend to be more student-run. We have pockets, like Athletics Council does a lot of that sort of work. There's the buddies program that we do. So I think they've been looking for that. I hear what you're saying though, so that's something we'll be talking more about. Greg?
So last year, last late spring, the high school, middle school formed the committee and we started looking at the positivity project. And part of it was what Danielle was saying is we need student input. So we're in a research phase, we're looking at schools that currently have that program and other programs, because it's about the common language. It just can't be a grade level, it just can't be a certain class. So we're looking at six, twelve programs, so when they leave the middle school, also enter the same language in the high school too. I know Mr. Carratio is going to be looking deeper into that. When we started the initial.
Yeah, we sent some teachers and some kids to visit other schools and programs. But the student body is critical.
Right, right. You have to have the buy-in.
If they don't see it as a positive impact or culture of the schools, we're going to lose them.
I guess the piece of like, all wonderful things and lots of things to consider. What I'm here about is we're still researching, we're looking into it, it's not the table. So we talked about, you know, putting kind of like a timeline in place. And you don't want to put a deadline if you don't have student buy-in. So I know I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, but we can't just research forever.
Yeah.
I think there were a change of leadership last year, so to switch over, so.
They're looking for something and, you know, we'll.
More.
Yeah, more to come, and I think again, that consistency piece that we talked about in our last meeting, and I talk about all the time at all of our meetings, is how does this scale, and if it's positivity project, okay. If that's not it, then what is it? We need to find something better, something for everybody. Okay, any other questions on that?
I'll just kind of close this segment up with, I do think, even though there is work to do with high school, you're a hundred percent right. I have friends that have students in other districts, and I will say, we have a lot of work to do, but we are actually doing the work, and it's very encouraging that even though we have some gaps, we are admitting that we have the gaps and that we are working on them and that we've got these little pockets here and there, and we're trying to close all the loops on things. And so it's, it's nice to be part of that, and I think sometimes we can get caught up as a board and as a community on all the things we are not doing and that we need to be doing. And part of that is our pursuit of excellence and keeping us the district that we are. But I think in that same token, just like we need to say, hey, some of these kids need to acknowledge they're doing super awesome, taking five APs, and it's okay to take a breather, that we need to say to ourselves, it's okay to demand more and expect more, but we also need to acknowledge, three years ago, we did not have half of the services that we have now in terms of mental health supports. We were not doing the biomass testing. We did not have Kristin Moses's position coordinating all of this social work in school psychology and all of that. We did not have some of that outreach to students that we had. So is it perfect? No. Is there work to do? Absolutely. Is it going to be going on forever? And are we going to be asking all the time, is this the best we can do? Yes. But we still need to appreciate what the district and our staff has done to get us to this point, because it is pretty remarkable when you look at some of our peer districts and some of the things that they've been going through and how they've handled it. And it could be any one of us at any time, but hopefully we've put some measures in place that are helping us avoid some of that tragedy. So that's all I want to say on that.
So, you know, on the preventative measures, we've done so much with the relationship building, with the student support, with mental health. Suicidality in schools is, I mean, I've been through it five times as a, as a school administrator. I've lost five children in my career, but I don't ever want to have another one of those meetings. My junior in high school lost three classmates this year to suicide. And when you talk about school safety and security and tragedy.
Not in the skinny Alice school district, just in the, she does not.
But suicidality and school violence are often two sides of the same coin. You have inward-directed anger and rage, and you have outward-directed anger and rage. And I maintain that before any bit of, you know, bullet-resistant glazing on a window would be better spent with another social worker, another caring adult, the life of a kid. But it's not this or that, and frankly, it's skinny Alice, so it's this and that. And that's, I get that as a dad. I have four kids from third grade, third grade, sixth grade, ninth grade, and eleventh grade. This is my greatest fear as a father, it's my greatest fear as an educational leader. I don't ever want to go through any sort of tragedy again, whether it's self-inflicted or outward violence. We, we work with the professionals in the field, we work with the United States Secret Service Program, we work with Jackie Chilcrow at SUNY Oswego, who literally wrote the book on school violence, to make sure that when we're making decisions, we're doing the most impactful things as we can. So it's not this or that, it's this and that. I am. I am recommending an additional SRO to be added to the two SROs that we have. We're also talking about increasing visibility and access to the other two SROs. Those are conversations that still have to happen. The board obviously doesn't need to make any decisions on this tonight, other than the fact that I will come to a subsequent board meeting with a recommendation that we add another SRO for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, twenty, yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four. I think it's, I think it's time, I think it's an opportunity to just watch the news and if there's a way to give our parents, our kids, and our faculty members a little added peace of mind and sense of security, I think it is money well spent.
And so just so the board is clear.
This is not an agenda item tonight.
Right, but what you are going to be asking for, and Connor is going to ask us for in four more minutes when you're, you know, passing the baton, is for money to pay for that. And that is what, is it, is it fair to say among the five of us, and I know Dana Carey's position, which I will also share, that we are supporting here in the effort to put another SRO in place?
Definitely.
And I will speak for Dana Carey because I had them text me just to make sure I had it, you know, they also support that. So when we get to the budget conversation, at that point, we are not deciding if we are getting an SRO, we are deciding which column of Connor's that we are going to have paid for that, a budget for that. Correct? We're all on the same page?
Yes. Thank you. So that was kind of a heavy conversation, letting in with something a little lighter and airier.
Worlds!
Congratulations to our Odyssey of the Mind world champion competitors. We had, I don't know if everybody saw it, but on, in March, sorry. In March, I had sent out, our parents were talking about the regional statewide competition that was happening at the state fairgrounds. Eleven awesome teams of kids competed to begin with. Four of those teams were selected to move on to the world championships. If you haven't seen Odyssey of the Mind, you have no idea the amount of effort and hours and materials. And sometimes I'll come in, there's a kid running a circular saw in the hallway, and I look the other way.
The toothpicks can hold so much weight.
The cost, the expense, the hours that our parent volunteers.
The hot glue gun, those little plasters.
And the hours spent by Ellen Wolfert.
Ellen Wolfert is a legend, you know.
Or she like lives at the school.
She does. So we just found this incredible lose-out on Saturday. I was inundated with parent requests about public acknowledgement, which I planned for tonight. We've also been inundated with parent requests about, oh, that's so fantastic that we have this honor, how are we getting thirty-five people to Michigan and how are we paying for it? So let me walk you through the numbers, and I'll, I'll share sort of a little bit of the detail that I have. We don't have all the detail yet, and that is why I'm a little hesitant to put anything out, because there's still some unknowns. So I'll walk, I'll walk everybody through it. We have four teams. Those four teams comprise twenty-six children. There are seven coaches. Each of these seven are parent volunteers. And I will say again, my goodness, the hours that are required of these people, even when they're not with the kids, the standing around and the watching, the waiting, it is unbelievable. And then we have two faculty members, which adds to a total of thirty-five individuals. Michigan State is hosting the world championship this year, and they, part of the fun and part of the experience is that the kids and the teams stay right on campus. So not only do we need to get thirty-five individuals to Michigan State, we need to get a tractor trailer full of whatever it is that they have created.
Orcre creations.
Safely between here and there. I heard a plan today that involved the U-Haul.
That you're driving?
It is, it is not competing, but we have a plan. So thirty-five people at six hundred and fifty dollars per person, which includes meals and hotels.
Oh, and dorm rooms, those are dorm rooms.
It is the dorm. Housing and meals, I should say, at Michigan State, is twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. But wait, there's more, because that doesn't include the coach buses, the driver of the coach bus, the housing and food for the driver of the coach bus for the four days that are required there as well. So.
Greg's going to drive the bus, so we'll see.
Early estimates put total cost around forty thousand dollars. So we will be sharing information about fundraising, we'll be sharing information about how to get those kids there. And I don't know the answers to these questions yet, but we're on it. And what I will say is, we're not going to let it happen that some sort of financial constraint costs kids the opportunity to get there. So I may come begging for money from the board, because this will be big ticket items, and I'm only allowed so much latitude to spend money before I have to ask you for it. So this is a little forewarning that I may be coming to.
And typically, they do do some of their own fundraising for this event.
Yeah.
So we're, so it'll be a joint effort.
For all the panicking parents, it's a joint effort.
It's a joint effort, and we are aware of the urgency.
There's awesome fundraising ideas in mind. I know people have contacted this Skinny Alice Education Foundation.
Dump tank in front of school with all of the principals for a straight ten dollars a ball.
Everything is on the table right now.
I think that would earn a lot of money. Maybe some board members, make sure those people are buying some of me, so let's go ahead. I admit it, let's do it.
But I guess the positive message is, this is just an unbelievable experience for these kids. They're competing with kids literally from across the world. In speaking to Ellen today, once both of our blood pressures came down enough to have a simple conversation, she was covered and I was, when I was trying to figure out the way to work on Monday, how to come up with forty thousand dollars to not physical children. She was telling me that there are school districts throughout the state, there are schools throughout the world that operate this as a STEM program, they operate this as an enrichment program, they operate this as a year-long academic class right within the school day, that all of this time is dedicated every single day. So the fact that our kids, as a club after school, have gotten to this point is just remarkable.
Good for them.
So congratulations to our kids.
Congratulations to them.
I'm going to give them a lot more accolades, my update this weekend, this Friday, hopefully with a little bit more added information. Once the fundraising ideas come out, I know Ellen's all over that, John Lawrence is all over that, we'll share everything that we can as often as we can, and we'll make sure that some combination of fundraising and, and support will get our kids where they need to be.
Amanda had a wonderful time in Michigan for a boy all day. I'm not going.
Oh, you sent him a husband?
No, our kids are going out. And that's okay, they did, they had so much fun. We are thankful for all the funs, but we are not one of the four teams.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One last reminder, and then I'm done. This is, you know, in keeping with the board's request to not always, you know, give the positive information, to give some things we need to work on as well. I will equate it to the weather, but attendance last week was abysmal. So we need kids to be at school, we need kids to be at school.
Is that why the school sent the crackdown message about getting to school?
Even when, even when it's eighty and sunny, we need your kids at school. So please help us get your kids to school. It got worse, culminating in, you know, eighty-two degrees and beautiful Friday. It was better today, we'll look outside, it was snowing, so.
No, I think they're setting it.
In central New York, I get it, it's weather-related, everybody's like ants coming out of their, their homes once the sun shines, but please help us get your kids to school at our time. Thank you. And that's all for me.
Any questions for Eric? So the real showstopper tonight and the reason we are all here, Connor, no pressure on you, it is the budget talk, the budget presentation. Before you jump into the whole thing, do you mind if I ask the board a question? Board members, we have seen this presentation in its entirety, I believe, four times at our past public board meetings. There were four community budget workshops that were open to the public to come to, two morning sessions during the day and around school drop-off time, two evening sessions. They all had an attendance of zero. But unless you guys have any specific questions or want to look at that state sheet that has black, white printing that we can't even read from here, would you mind?
So we're still the same.
Oh, it's still, it's still. Would you guys mind if Connor hits the highlight reel on this?
Highlights.
Okay. For any members of the community that want the full presentation after the budget is adopted tonight, it will be posted to our website, correct?
Yes, so once you guys formally adopt a budget, a new budget page will be up.
On the website.
Actual numbers.
And then that will remain up there until the budget vote, which is in May, which will hold for states later.
And the presentation is on Word, actually.
Just want to be sure that you appreciate them, that we, you know that we all appreciate them.
Yes.
Yes.
We know how much time you've spent on this.
Not only you, I know you reach out to a lot of people in the rest of the film.
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I brought it on my own. For any of our visitors, if you'd like to join us for coffee and seventy-two PowerPoint slides on state funding, your work were yours.
I'm at forty-four.
So yeah, let's, let's get to the, let's get to the beef.
Okay, so basically, at the last board meeting, the board director made, there was two.
If any of you can't see, you are free to move your chairs over here.
Basically, three scenarios for tax increase. There was a one point seven two, a one point nine nine, it was a twelve two six. Conversation was had amongst the board, and it was decided to move forward a one nine nine percent tax increase to lighten the burden on the taxpayers and not go void the tax gap. Since that meeting, recent events, school shootings around the country have happened and, which has piqued obviously our interest of funding, which Eric says will, a recommendation will be. and, which has piqued obviously our interest of funding, which Eric says will, a recommendation will be coming. What that looks like, we obviously don't have the answers yet, but the funding portion of this is basically what we're deciding on tonight. We've seen this presentation before, basically now we have two scenarios. It'll be the one nine nine. There we go. Just get forward, so we have the library proposition as well, board election information. So, before I get into all that, I just wanted to talk about the fund balance management plan, because this is one of the big differences that you'll see from last presentation. We did not have a number of how much of that we were going to incorporate in this coming year's budget. So, just to recap, as we all know, we are above the four percent, which is four percent of next year's budget that we are allowed to have in a quote-unquote savings bank, savings bank, or formerly called undersigned fund balance, that is not specifically used for any particular reason. Currently, we are at thirteen point eight percent. A lot of that has to do with smart financial planning, but also the influx of all the COVID funding, and that is set to dry up. So, we are being forward-thinking and forecasting on long-term planning of how to not spend this money so fast that in a year or two, we need money and we don't have it. So, we're methodically thinking of how to incorporate, give the community what they need, what the district wants, stick to our strategic plan, because at the end of the day, the community, the district worked very hard into developing this strategic plan, and all the decisions that we make should come back and reflect that plan.
Just one more shameful plug, I do this every time. That healthy fund balance was the difference why K through seven in-person instruction happened here during COVID nineteen. If we didn't have that, there was no way we could have staffed and supported that.
So, now that we do have this surplus funds in our quote-unquote savings bank or undersigned fund balance, the district, ABF, and administration has worked to find priority areas to spend these funds of what basically hits our core values and our strategic plans. So, basically, what the board decided last time is, we are going to lighten that burden on taxpayers to not go to the two point two six or the cap. From the decision last, obviously, recent events changed that, or could change that. But since we have this money, we will lighten the burden on the taxpayers when we go out, and we need to keep, keep up the contractual obligations, but when it's possible, we will scale back on that tax increase. Other areas are security, safety, equipment, instruction, social emotional health, what we've used for a lot of the COVID funds, that had recently built into the budget with the new position, Thalia Health with Promise, which we've all heard tonight. So, basically, we have looked at all these areas, security cameras, door access stuff, upgrading those to become just more secure for our students, our staff, and our community. So, basically, at ABF meeting on March twentieth, so this is just a actual nitty-gritty of the numbers. So, to start this school year, we just had, we had about five point, almost two million dollars in this underside fund balance amount. Our legal limit was just about one point five million, so we are just three point seven million above that amount. And again, I'll preface this as well, every county in New York State and average is above that four percent. This has to do with COVID funding, this has to do with all the influx of money coming in. So, this is not a Skinni Alice problem, it's a statewide problem, so we are not in the soul on that. So, in effort to decrease this amount and become compliant, we are developing a plan to incorporate this money into the budget and start spending that down on these priority areas that are in line with our strategic plan. So, when we build these funds into the budget, we are not obligated to spend that exact dollar amount. We are not obligated to spend on a specific item. These are items that will be brought before the board, because they could be big ticket items, and will be decided along the way, but we need to build that money into the budget, because the taxpayers vote on an amount of money that we can spend, and we cannot spend over that. So, if we have that built into the budget, we can spend it, but if we don't, we cannot spend it. And if we don't spend it, that money will continue to roll over. So, it's not a lose-it type thing, but it's an amount that's hefty enough that can help us cover either big-ticket items or make significant purchases if we need to. So, when I go through the quick three-part budget, I just wanted to highlight that these are the amounts where the jumps in the budget will be. So, when you see that significant percentage increase in significant areas, it's due to building in that expense for the fund balance management plan. So, in this current, in this next budget, I'll be proposing one million, one hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars of that three point seven million to incorporate into next year's budget. So, types of revenue, we've talked about this, tax cap calculation, we have a two point two six tax cap limit. We have seen this, and then the two scenarios. So, basically, like I said, board directed me to build a budget on a one point nine nine percent tax increase, which gave us five hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars. In recent events, with the push for SROs, there are two options here to either one. Where is this money gonna, to fund this SRO gonna be coming out of? Is it gonna be our fund balance management plan, where we set this fund aside for specific priority areas? Or do we go to the two point two six and use the additional almost seventy-four thousand dollars to pay for whatever the recommendation is for additional SRO or SROs? So, just tax cap scenarios, just from a one point nine nine, basically on average per township, you're looking at a basically twenty-eight to thirty cent increase per thousand dollar of assessed home, and probably a thirty-two cent increase when we, if we were to go to.
Per thousand. So, on a, on a five hundred thousand dollar home, it's roughly a hundred and forty bucks a year at the one point nine nine, give or take.
Correct. So, as Danielle, the state aid runs is April eighteenth.
My favorite page for you.
April eighteenth, and there's still not a state adopted budget. So, every year, the governor does a projected aid run in January, and then April first is supposed to have an adopted state budget. We are almost three weeks in, and they are still extending that, and have not formally adopted their state budget. So, the school district does not have final state aid runs. And today is the final day that all districts in New York State are available to adopt a budget, and the state doesn't give us our final numbers, so.
So, by law, we have to adopt a budget based on?
Projections.
Projections, not actual dollars.
Correct. So, overall, there are basically two or three things I'll highlight here. Obviously, one point nine nine percent tax increase. For property taxes, we're looking at, like I said, that five hundred forty-two thousand dollar increase of one point nine nine percent. State aid, as I mentioned last few meetings, the big jump here is from our additional BOSI's revenue. We pushed a lot of things for BOSIs and maximized our aid to get that kickback. That was almost three hundred thousand dollars of this four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and the other about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is the minimum foundation aid increase that we received. So, that is about five point two-three percent. And if we were to not push so much to BOSIs, we were probably looking at one to one and a half percent of an increase. So, we've done a really good job with that.
So, let me just, just real quick, so if we were to approve, well, we gotta promote it at some level, right? Then STT comes in below the projections. We're gonna have to find, obviously, by law, we've got, you know, a half a deficit.
A deficit, um.
Well, if the STT is less, if the annual STT that's approved is less. It means that, you know, it's a smaller contributor to our bottom line.
Sure, yeah, our, our expenses throughout the euro deficit need to be managed and looked out a lot more.
Historically, if you go back years to this, they underpromise with their projections and then overdeliver.
Well, I've seen that last couple of years, but, but, you know, we're, yeah.
Are you hearing any chatter at the state level that they will come in under the draft number?
The biggest things that they're pushing for is like universal free meals, things like that that don't really have an effect on just the foundation aid calculation. It's more of those other extra items rather than the actual funding.
Okay, so it's a low probability, just.
Absolutely, yep. We've never seen, I would say never, because the projection COVID was.
That's the last one.
Yes, so that was the only time where it went to nothing. But every time, we've seen at least what we've seen in the state aid runs, the initial.
One of the reasons why attendance is so important is because in addition to the fact that the student misses out on instruction is the most important reason, of course, we also miss out on state aid.
Yeah, our ADA, our average daily attendance goes into that, some calculations.
We're required to keep careful attendance records, and then report that to the state. There's a feedback loop now, it's listening.
Absolutely, it's all tied together in one formula or another, yep. Charges for services, the big increase here is for additional interest come out that we perceive. In previous years, when interest rates were nothing, we had about fifteen thousand dollars of interest for the year. This year, we received almost four hundred thousand dollars in interest revenue. So, we're recognizing some of that. We don't want to recognize that whole thing in case something happens, but we are starting to recognize a little bit more of that interest revenue, which is for that big increase here of fifty percent. Inter-fund transfers, at the end of the day, there's a big number of almost twenty-three percent, but the amount is two thousand dollars. That's just an inter-fund transfer for debt payments, premiums for borrowings. So, and then the big thing, the big change here, a hundred and forty-one percent, is the incorporation of that fund balance management money. So, we are incorporating that money. That is not earmarked for a specific thing, like I said, but it's set aside to start to taper off that surplus and getting compliance for the New York State.
So, Connor, the reason we have so many visitors here tonight is not because they love the look of the State Street Library and wanted to be here, but for the topic that I'm sure most of them are interested in. The money that is in the appropriate fund balance, you said it's unrestricted, so that is the district's discretion to use separate from restricted funds, or we can only use them on certain types of projects. Which means if the board opts to go with the one nine nine for the tax rate, in that bucket of money, that's how we could utilize funding for the SRO pocket of employees.
Absolutely.
For a better way to put it. And if we go to the two-two-six, we will take less out of our savings, and it will show up on a, what other line item will that, that'll just, it'll come out of our staffing line or something?
Correct, basically, so, SROs, there was a new line created by the state, the security of plan. So, currently, they are funded here, so a one point nine nine percent tax increase. We would keep that flat, but we would end up, at the end of the day, do a budget transfer to fund that. But if we were to go to the two-two-six, you see the security of plan was the increase of that dollar amount of the initial.
And at the two-two-six, the line item for the fund balance is lower, because we're gonna use less fund balance at the two-two-six number.
Say that one more time.
If we go to the two-two-six, the, I don't know.
The amount of fund balance.
The amount of fund balance that we're adding to the budget is a lower amount.
Uh, no.
No, no, we're potentially seeing. If we use flexibility, that should be out of the budget.
Okay.
So, it'd basically be in the property taxes. So, if you see here at the two-two-six, we get six hundred sixteen thousand, and this one we get five hundred forty-two thousand. At the one-nine-nine, we have one point seven three seven of appropriate fund balance, and we have the same amount in the two-two-six. So, the revenue would be from the taxpayers, or we pay it from that line of appropriate fund balance. So, at the end of the day, those are basically the two differences that we've seen that we need to dive into before you guys make your decision. You guys have seen this before, the same numbers from last time, the only difference is this security of plan line item.
Board members, let's take a pause for a second. Any questions you have for Connor so far, or any just general budget tax increase questions or comments you wanna make? Any? No. Tom?
Got any thoughts? No, Gary? No, but I feel like the reason why we are all sitting here saying, no questions, no questions, no questions, is because we've been through this so many times, and the ABF has gone through this, and we've presented it in detail so many times, so just for the sake of saying it.
For, for the sake of the record, we have gone through this budget multiple prior board meetings, asked our questions, dissected all of those lines, figured out how it impacts our staffing or does not impact our staffing in terms of classroom teachers and all other things.
So, the question before the board that we left there.
Are you guys comfortable right now, based on the information that we've talked about at every other meeting, based on the request of Eric tonight, based on what's Connor's found over so far, are you ready to make a decision on what tax level we would like to bring to the voters for vote?
Yeah, I'm ready to discuss it.
Well, does that, is that a separate, Connor, we, we don't vote on that, we just discuss it and tell you what we want on the ballot, right? There's not.
Yeah, so there's two items.
I see, I see it's coming up.
It's approval of the budget, and there's two property tax reports down there, one for the one-nine-nine and one for the two-two-six. So, we need to specify which one you're.
Okay, so when we, so we can talk about it right now, we can say what we verbally agree on. When we get to that agenda item, we will then vote to approve that particular one. So, I guess we can just kinda go around, if everyone wants to say what their thought of, and make sure we're on the same page, and if not, we can continue discussions. We'll start with you, Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, I'm fine with the one-nine-nine.
Okay.
Certainly, the context of how we have it laid out, I mean, everything's supposed to be well-funded, right? And the caveat is that we're backing off from the cap, like we spoke about last board meeting, it's pretty much a seamless thing. We're backing off the cap because of the current broader economic situation. We expect a powerful response from you to make sure you bring some relief to our taxpayers, right?
That's the number one on the fund balance management plan, you'll see, number one goal.
I mean, I.
Right, and that's a legal expectation, actually.
Yep.
That we, that's how we manage the district's funds, right? But we're fortunate that we're able to do that while we ensure the security of our students in our district. So, we're fortunate we're able to do that, and we have the means of doing it because of the excess fund balance, right? I wanna be of the record to see that when we get to next year and we have to do a budget, it's very likely that we probably have to go to the cap, so that we can have it as a line item, because you would have diminished the excess fund balance. And that's, that's by design, that's by choice. But I wanna see it this year, so that's.
So, it's not a surprise.
Yes, it's not a surprise, and this is a, is a thoughtful reason why we are opting to go in this particular direction at this particular time, so.
Fair.
All right?
Yeah. Mr. Lambeth, what say you?
So, we have eight thousand dollars additional money now for security of the plan that we did not have in previous. So, that's going toward funding additional personnel for the security of the plan.
That's the intent, yes.
So, given, and that is in at the one point nine nine.
So, you can have it either way, one, the taxpayers bear the burden of it, and two, it's out of fund balance.
So, I support keeping things at one point nine nine, and also spending on security out of fund balance to, to just be sure that we're staffed correctly in that area, and that we grow in sensible manner in that, in that area. Thank you.
Mrs. New, yeah?
Very similar to what was already shared, and comfortable with the one-nine-nine in, you know, being fiscally responsible with spending down that, you know, excess of funds that we have, but with the understanding that when you add additional staffing through that fund balance, it is very unlikely that in the future we are going to back off of that staff. So, making sure that we are, you know, we're looking at a safe plan for longevity and making sure that as we add in extras, we can keep those in the future. You know, we're looking at a safe plan for longevity and making sure that as we add in extras, we can keep those in the future.
Yeah.
Since we already gave back out of the fund balance last time, I'm for the two-two-six. For the very reason you just said, that we know next year, to be able to fund this, we're going to have to do something different. We're at a time now where, in my opinion, that it's a minimal increase. We know we can get it in the budget, it locks it in the budget. We don't know what it's going to be like next year. We got other issues I know are going to be coming up next year with contracts and all that. I'd rather make an easier decision now of funding this, putting it in and making a commitment to it so we know it's in there so we don't have to try to deal with it next year.
Okay, I will, because they're not here, they did email me, and so I will just tell you. Dan and Carrie, just for the record, a hundred percent support of funding the SRO. Both of them in separate notes, their preference is to do it at the one-nine-nine and they won't get a vote tonight because they're not here, but just so you know where they stand, because we do have that large fund balance. So that's where they both are. I teeter, I agree with Tim, I agree with everybody else. I think if we did not have such a healthy fund balance, I would say we definitely have to go to the cap because we have to ensure that it stays on the budget and stays as its own line item. But because we are excessively and some would argue overfunded in our savings account and it's money that we have to spend, I would be comfortable at the one-nine-nine knowing that if you go back three years, when we put Kristin Moses in, she was hired with FERPA, SERPA money, whatever it was. Like A, B, C, D, E, F, G, state, federal COVID money. But the discussions that the board had at the time for people that weren't on the board were, great, it's free money, we're going to fund this position, but once we have it, we are never going to get rid of it. How do we responsibly do that? Because you can't put it out there and then be like, just kidding, I'm taking it back. And so I don't know what voodoo Connor did, but he basically started kind of.
Incredibly.
Putting money aside, knowing that we had to wean ourselves off of that. And so as long as, and the board will obviously change, there'll be some changes by next year and the year after, but I would hope that that philosophy kind of sticks with the board in perpetuity, that we plan for funding this while responsibly right now, taking it out of our savings, knowing that we've got to build it in. So for that, and because we've got to get something to pass tonight and we will need to work. I will go with the one-nine-nine when it comes to vote, just so that we can make sure that we've got a budget to put forward to the voters. But Connor, no pressure on you, just make a big note that you've got to start putting money aside for next year so it stays as a line item. What else do you need from us, Connor, because we'll vote on this and a couple more agenda items, so.
Just when we get to item B, you clarify that you're down to the one-nine-nine. When you get to F, you're down to one point nine-nine percent.
You can remind me where you hit that.
Yep.
Anything else from you as part of your business manager and tax report?
I'm all set.
Okay, we're going to move on to item C, which is the board of ed update. I will keep it pretty quick, just a couple things. Thanks, Tim, for going to the coast of dinner with Eric last week. I heard it was pretty awesome, it was great to see the students put together the dinner and kind of see what, things that they're learning over go season and get them to showcase their good work. A couple other things I just wanted to bring up. As I stated earlier, and I just kind of want to go on the record and have it out there for the public, we have had multiple conversations at our public board meetings about the school budget. These start back in February. In addition, the district twisted four budget meetings, two AM sessions, two evening sessions. With few exceptions, we've had one to two folks attend our board meetings. Zero people attended the superintendent and business official budget meeting hearings or budget discussion talks, which are a great opportunity to sit in a very small setting and actually have a back and forth conversation. This is a trend that we have seen for at least a year. We don't get a lot of attendance at our board meetings, which is great because maybe it means that people trust us to do our jobs and believe what we're doing, but also this is your school and this is your community and it is your opportunity to be involved. We have PTC groups that are drowning and dying because they don't have any membership and they don't have leadership people to take over. Yet we have parents that want a lot of things and think this is a wonderful place. So I guess this is my little beg and plea to get involved in your school in any capacity because people need help. And if you see your elementary, your middle school and your high school PTC, would love to see more members. We would love to see people at our board meetings, you know, hearing what we talk about, seeing our thought process, listening to how we go through all these very interesting numbers and understand how they work and how they impact our schools. So that's just my little salt box moment. And then one other thing that I will add from a board standpoint, because it rolls into committee updates, but I'll pass it to Amanda to do the curriculum committee. Amanda and I will be looking at Eric's request, updating the NRCAM policy. So we'll have, we'll try to get together before the next meeting because we are the policy committee, the two of us.
I have a model policy from the school district, that's very good.
Just to update it and make sure that it is more current and more relevant to today. So her and I will take that on. That's all I had for a board of ed update at this point. So I will pass it over to you if you want to do the curriculum committee update, since you just said that before you came.
We had our first newly re-envisioned curriculum meeting right before we meet here. There is eight.
Eight to ten, someone.
There are eight or nine parents in attendance that have, you know, no affiliation with the school district on top of Brian, Francine, Gary, Eric and myself. It was really productive conversation where instead of the school deciding, you know, hey, people are going to be interested in literacy in September and we'll present on that in October, that is the thing. We really sat around and just roundtable discussion. What are parents interested in hearing? What are they hearing as they talk with other parents about hot topics and concerns to bring up? So it was just an initial meeting, I mean, we didn't get very far, but we are meeting again on May second and really looking at, I think, developing a kind of flexible model that has parent input on what we are sharing at curriculum committee and also allowing, you know, the teachers and curriculum coordinators to say, these are hot topics from R N. These are the questions that we're fielding from R N. So we're putting together a calendar. I certainly left it feeling like, all right, we're moving in a good direction. It was certainly exciting to see, to sit around and talk with people other than just our school affiliated people who typically attend the curriculum committee. But just, you know, for the public and anyone listening, that's your opportunity to come and ask questions. And it's like a constant area for a mini open house on specific topics, right? Where you can actually have the back and forth and ask the questions about things that you're concerned about. So if you want something to be addressed as we set up that calendar, reach out. Because we are developing it as we.
I think it's fair to say the ABF committee doesn't need to give an update tonight because that is the ABF committee. Once we are out of budget season, then we will go back to regular ABF committee updates. One last note and then we'll get into the business and I'll read as fast as I can. Just to highlight what Jen Whipple said earlier, what you said and kind of what you said. The district is the best source of information, whether it's the classroom teacher, the principal, the district office. It is so much easier and saves so much time for all producer, because it gets everybody on the same correct page if you go to the source for information. So whether it is a concern about your child, whether it's academics, whether it's the bus, whether it's something else, it is better to go to the people that will give you the information and tell you what is going on than fester or be concerned but not know where to go. Just ask, there's a lot of people in our district that are really willing to help and put you in the right direction and get you to where you get the information you need. So don't hesitate to reach out to any member of our staff, whether it is teacher, principal, admin or whatever. To get what you're looking for.
What comment? I think you did a really good job explaining stuff and I think that's extremely helpful. And the second thing is, I think it's great with the curriculum committee that you've got parental involvement because so many schools are taking heat these days for feeling like parents can't get involved enough. And I just think that's a really good thing to do. And it's so important with curriculum as far as influencing the positive outcomes for students. Awesome job there.
One of the notes too, just a plug for curriculum committee. We were trying to get a standing committee of people that will be there every meeting, but it is always open to public. So anybody that's, anybody that wants to come is more than welcome. Right now, it looks like it will be board meeting next, we'll have a calendar of events, so I'll push out for Paris, where.
And just on that note, by design and by state law, only two board members can attend meetings together or it is an unintentional forum and then we get in trouble for not telling the public that we were having a meeting. So things like the curriculum committee or AB, oh, sorry, it's three board members. Three board members can be in the same room, that's why you will not see the full board attend a curriculum committee because we will get in trouble. And if one of us were to show up early, we can stand in the back of the room but not participate. We can just observe but not speak, which, so clearly, I will just never show up. Not speak, but that is why you would never see the full board there. It's no lack of support for any particular committee, it is a violation of open meeting law if we were to all be there. So on that note, time for my speed reading. You know my bedtime is eight fifteen, so this, got to get to this fast. You guys ready?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to move on to new business if nobody has anything else. Okay, I'm going to group A, B, C and D together. Item A is a personnel report, resignation, retirement, leave termination. It's for the resignation of Scott Green and the unpaid leave of absence of Maria Murphy. Item B is personnel, that is the appointment of Kelsey Uml for special ed. It is the appointment of Peter Scala for seven through twelve chemistry, Amanda Franco, Kate through twelve music, probationary appointment of Zach Chawago, groundskeeper, and Michael Westover, custodial worker, and Allison Slater, custodial worker. Item C is substitute temporary volunteer appointments. Kelsey Calabro, substitute teacher, Brady Guy, substitute teacher, Bridget Carroll, substitute teacher, Braden Parker, substitute teacher, Martha Perkins, substitute teacher, Carolyn Atwater, substitute custodial worker, Scott Green, substitute custodial worker, James Ryan as the boys varsity basketball coach. Could I get, oh, and I'm going to go D, just kidding. D is the appointment of the election inspector the board of education approves. Quentin Lockwood III, or commonly known as Skip Lockwood, as the chief election inspector on May sixteenth for the budget vote and board of ed election. It also approves the slate of election inspectors, which you, election inspectors, which you have in your board packet and it has all of the names listed. Can I get a motion to approve A, B, C and D together?
So.
Second. Okay, first Tim, second Amanda. Any questions or comments on any of these appointments?
Just one clarification, Zach Chawago was on last board meeting, but his birthday just moved out, so that's why he's on there.
He's on there again, okay, great, thank you. Anything else, questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving A, B, C and D together, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes, congratulations to everybody. We're going to move on, item E, Connor, this is me, right? This is where I'm going to. The board of education adopts the twenty-three, twenty-four as presented. Now, would you like me to mention at the one point nine-nine, at the one point nine-nine tax levy?
Yes.
Yes, can I get a motion on that? Okay, first by Tom, second by Amanda. Any questions, comments or discussion on this one? No, okay, all those in favor of the tax levy at one point nine-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just the time I say it or win an excellent five posse?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Okay, so that is four in favor and one opposed. That passes. Next item is the property tax report card. The board of education approves the property tax report. Let me just take a second. The board of education approves the property tax report card based on the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget. And we are going to approve the property tax report card at one point nine-nine. Any comments, questions, oh, can I get a motion?
Sure.
Gary, and I will second that, first by Gary, second by Danielle. Any comments, questions or discussions on this one? No, okay. All those in favor of the one point nine-nine tax report card, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Both.
Mr. Caveria on the opposition for that one. Okay, I'm going to move on and group G, H, I and J together. G is a CSA MOA, say that ten times real fast. The board of education approves the attached MOA for the Skinnietliss Civil Service Association. H is board of education hereby approves the final version of the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. For anyone listening, April vacation is really late, it starts April twenty-second, please take note, buy your tickets to Florida now. I is the approval of the holiday schedule, board of education approves the twenty-three, twenty-four holiday schedule as attached. Christmas is on the twenty-fifth, if you did not know. J, BOSI's ADAPEP.
ADAPAP.
Oh, okay. Board of education approves the BOSI's ADAPAP agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-three calendar year as attached. Can I get a motion on G, H, I and J together?
So.
Second.
First by Amanda, second by Tim, questions or comments on these items? Okay, all those in favor of approving G, H, I and J together, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All of those pass. Pass, and pass. Okay, K, SEF grant. The board of education approves the attached SEF grant, which is an SEF grant for Alan Heeson. Can I get a motion on this?
So.
First by Amanda, second by Gary. Questions or comments on this?
Congratulations, the objective was to create an original composition of the middle school band. Impressive, not anything I can do, so.
Good job and kind of as usual, thank you to SEF for continuing to support our students and our teachers in all of their efforts, it's much approved. All those in favor, if there's no further questions or comments, of approving item K?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Item L is all of our financial reports, they are in line on your computer in your board packet. The board of education approves the February twenty-three and March twenty-three financial reports as attached. I will make the motion on that if I can get a second.
Second.
Second by Gary. Questions, comments on all these reports? Tom, go back into the archives and pull up a little mic call for us.
Anything unusual that we should be.
Not unusual.
With that as well. Exception reporting, Mike said.
Any additional questions? All those in favor of approving item L, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. And we'll go on to item M, CSE, CPSC, five oh four reports. The board of education arranges for the placement of the students with disabilities as recommended by the CPSC, CSE and five oh four committees. You have those reports attached in your board packet. Can I get a motion?
So.
First by Amanda, I will second that. Comments or questions on this? No? Okay, all those in favor of passing those reports, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, anybody opposed? Those all pass as well. We are on to process review. Couple things of note. Again, because we did it at the beginning and we do have these people that sat here, I will ask again, before we go into process review, even though this is a special board meeting, would the board like to consider offering public comment for the folks at state?
Yes.
Would that be okay with you? Okay. Typically, at special meetings, we do not accept comments from the public, but the board has decided that tonight, because you were all here, we will do public comment at the end, like we would if this were a regular board meeting. If anybody would like to have public comment, you can go back up to the podium just before. I can read you that whole paragraph I read at the beginning, or you can just remember that it's exactly the same paragraph I read at the beginning. If anyone would like to make a comment, you are free to go up. Okay, see, I had a taker. Don't forget to say your name and address, please.
Buckney Pittman, actually, class of ninety-seven, 4476 Penner Hill Road. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I just wanted to note that there was assumptions that we were all here for a certain thing. Me or my husband have been coming, we have a kindergarten, since September, one of us has been here, maybe missed two board meetings. Because we want to see what you guys do, we appreciate what you guys do, we thank you for what you guys do. And anybody we talk to, we say, why aren't you going to these board meetings? So while I absolutely support another SRO. Um, so while I absolutely support another SRO, that was not my intention for being here tonight, but I do have one comment about the curriculum meetings. They're five o'clock, it's so hard. Like that's when my husband's coming home from work. Um, I'm sure parents in high school have kids that play sports and are going to, um, games and I would love to be at those meetings. It's not possible for us, so just maybe a consideration of changing the time to six, six thirty. Um, and I would be happy to, that's it.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you. And P.S., we do not engage with the public during public comment, but I'll just say to the board, I appreciate feedback like that, as does the board, because we don't know that people can't come at five o'clock if they don't say it. So I'm not responding to your comment, I'm just making it known to the board. It's wonderful, it's wonderful to get feedback because we can do stuff with feedback, right? So just wanted to note that. Anybody else like to say anything? No? All right, we will move on with closing items. Um, the BOCSE's budget vote is Wednesday, 4/26 at 7:30. That is at the district office. Um, Connor or Tom, maybe you could explain better, but the BOCSE's budget vote is just all taxpayers vote to approve a BOCSE's budget, just like they would a school budget, correct?
Right, so the, uh, so Connor showed the BOCSE's component in the budget, which was funding educational opportunities for students. The vote on Wednesday and a week is simply the vote on the administrative component of BOCSE's, of the BOCSE's budget, which is really a relatively small part of the budget, but it's the part that's within the discretion of schools to vote yes or no.
And so all the schools in BOCSE's, all the districts vote on this?
Just for, uh, the sake of vocabulary, because we're worse than the military with acronyms, but what BOCSE's is, is the Bureau of Cooperative Education Services. And what that does is it allows school districts to share services and generate aid based on the cost of those services. So if we buy paper products through BOCSE's, if we buy software licenses through BOCSE's, if we have shared employees through BOCSE's, if we send our kids to BOCSE's programs, the cost of those is reimbursed in the following year's budget to each school district at their aid rate. Some, some school districts, it's all based on wealth or, uh, it's based on wealth of the school district. So what's our aid rate in BOCSE's right now, Connor?
Around 44%.
So at any dollar we can send through BOCSE's, we get 44 cents back on them. So as you watch the BOCSE's component of the budget increase, that's something that I've, Connor and I have worked really hard on over the last year to make sure that we're not leaving any of those pennies on the table and we're pushing everything we can through BOCSE's.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that explanation.
Just the other thing that we voted on is the three people who will be, so Tom is one of them.
Oh, for the BOCSE's, BOCSE's board and one of those in our presence, Mr. Landon.
Thank you, Mr. Landon.
For the BOCSE's board, for nominating the BOCSE's board, so thank you for representing us.
And I should have said this in my, in my beginning, when you talked about the COSA dinner, is our friend and longtime partner here, Catherine Carlson, formerly retired from BOCSE's. And if you don't know Catherine, get to know her, she's who, she's wonderful. And she has served the school district as an employee or a board member or BOCSE's as a board member for many, many, many years and she's tremendous.
Congratulations to her on her retirement and Tom, thanks for picking up the torch.
I can carry it one handed off from Catherine, but I'm not gonna...
But if it was a shot, put it in. Shawn is also our high school shot put coach, so.
Volunteer.
Volunteer, volunteer shot put coach, but.
Probably discuss.
Doing pretty good.
Right now.
Uh, all right, so the next regular board meeting is Tuesday, um, May 2nd and we are holding that in which location?
We, we decided Waterman Elementary.
That one is at Waterman? Uh, but where's the budget vote? Is that at Waterman?
The budget vote was at Waterman. Is that?
We have to be...
Done the budget vote, we go to the high school.
We go to the high school, okay.
We can change that, that doesn't have to be set in stone, but just...
Okay, let's confirm that and then we'll just make sure we communicate it through Parents Square, just...
However you wanna do it.
That's up to you guys.
Let me know and we'll, we'll send it out.
I don't have a preference.
Do Waterman on second and the high school on the 16th?
We could do that.
I would say maybe ask Pat and see if he has any input on the second.
Goodbye, Waterman. Best concert ever, Status Concert, that one, Status. All right, so we will, we will determine the location of the 5-2 meeting and then we've gotta do an agenda setting for that, um, May 2nd meeting. Is anybody available for agenda setting either April 25th or April 27th?
I can do the 25th at four.
Um, I can do the 25th at either time, anybody else?
I can.
Why don't you ask others, you know, I was...
I can group you. We can have one on the 25th or 27th.
Okay. Let's, um, I will send out an email just to everyone just to see if, if Dan or Carrie wanna jump in. But otherwise we will be able to come up with three and we'll do one, we'll do one of those dates and we'll get back to you for agenda setting. Okay, then most importantly, budget vote and Board of Ed meeting and certification of the vote is on May 16th, which is also a Tuesday. That board meeting will be held likely at the high school. That board meeting is never held in the district office because that is where all of the voting takes place. Um, so we will also communicate where that location of that meeting will be. Board members, don't forget that night, we stay till the end, till all the votes are counted. So even if the board meeting is over, we just get to hang out and, I don't know, Gary can tell us stories or something. Uh, do like a Cap Day show, I don't know. We'll figure it out, but we will stay till the end.
May 8th.
And then we can certify the vote so that we can announce and accept the adopted budget and...
Definitely you start that meeting at eight too.
Okay.
So there's not so many...
But I would say first...
We did probably, last year we talked about starting it at 10.
Yeah.
Cause we were...
In the morning?
Always like, no at night.
Yeah, well, I'd like, I'll see you in the next morning.
Cause we were still there.
Okay.
But in between now and then.
We will, we will confirm locations and we will communicate that out to both the board and the community.
And I would also say any member of the community, while we are asking for a 1.99 tax levy to be approved, if you have questions, please reach out.
Yes.
Just cause this is the last meeting and we approved it, please reach out.
Connor would love nothing more, and Eric too, for a community member with questions to come to them directly with the questions and ask them. Connor will pull that whole slideshow out and go slide by slide if you would...
I'll go through the 1200 ledger.
Yeah, that's right, every line. All right, so we are all set on that. Uh, I don't think we have anything else, so if that is it and no other board members have anything, I would like to request a motion to adjourn.
So. Right.
Okay.